Folks, welcome back. Now is your time to email us, comment what we talked about. Call us at 304-335-2826. Now if you don't do it, it's not our fault. We're here if you talk to us. We do want to hear from you. We want to have perhaps your input on some ideas and what would you do? I know that what I just taught will be filed as open for open rebellion. I have nothing against that. There comes a time for civil disobedience. We crossed that line a long time ago. Because we haven't gotten in the streets, so to speak, our children have paid a hell of a price for our apathy. You know, Thomas, Ben Franklin said one time that paraphrased that those who give up essential liberty for a security, temporary security, deserve neither. In Daniel 8:25, I did a three-hour teaching when I was showing this scripture years ago, Ray Allen Fieldhouse. When he says that the beast system, the anti-Christian, would destroy many through peace. Without being real smart, I know what peace meant. It meant peace. And I thought it meant that he'll destroy the world by the power of the un-forced teeth of peace. I was going to work that day. I was shaving in the bathroom and the Holy Spirit kept telling me, "Go look that word up." "What for?" I know what it means. You ever argue with the Lord? I don't need to look it up. I know what it means. So finally, after prompting, went back there and opened up the Concordance. I didn't leave my seat for three hours. You want to tell the word peace means in Daniel 8:25? False security and prosperity. That's what it means. Now understand why Christ said, "Don't trust man," understand what Thomas Jefferson or Ben Franklin said right here. For security sake, for our welfare checks, search treaty checks, insurances, whatever, we've sold our birthright. He saw a deal for bold forage. Maybe we've done a little better than that, but we sold it nonetheless. These generations, it gets worse and worse. Now, open the lines up right now for your comments, emails, whatever.
I've got two emails.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, the first one's from, I'll move that back. Okay. "Cupid Ken here for Pastor Ernie Sanders. He has pneumonia and has a raspy voice. And I'm just learning about your online video process. I will study it and share what I can with Ken, Kevin, and others here to be more effective. We are also experiencing some computer malfunctions. I would like to be able to broadcast Sunday sermons from here at Doers of the Word Baptist Church in a manner similar to what you're doing there on your end." This is from John Darnes in Ohio. "I am torn between hiding my guns from search and seizure military type style like they do in Iraq or leaving and confronting the soldiers. Nehemiah 4:14 mentioned in the last news letter may be our guide. Does God intend to tell us whether to fight or keep in hiding for our descendants?
I'd be glad to answer that for you, John. If not now, when? What good would do to hide your guns for future generations to be more dumb down than we are? What good would do to hide your guns and hope that your children will take them up? If you don't have enough courage to take them up, why do you peddle them do that? They are the seed of you, are they not? If you teach them complacency and cowardice by burying your guns, you condemn them to slavery in their own lives. That's just that easy. The Bible does tell us what to do. We don't need to ask what should we do. It tells us what to do. As Phil said during the clips, Christ himself said, "If you don't sell a sword, sell your coat and buy a weapon." We're commanded in 1st Timothy, chapter five, to defend our families. No, do not bury your guns. May bury a couple of them so you can find them later, but have one ready to go. And I do, and I will. I mean this to God, to all that's holy. I will use what I have to use to defend myself, my wife, my brothers and sisters. I will use it. Living is not the end of all things. Living is, if you live through this, it may prove you're a coward. It's just that easy.
I have two more, Butch. This is from Greg in North Carolina. "In Jeremiah, chapter six, verses 17 to 21, where God spoke to the nations, congregation, and earth, and warned them with judgment, who hearkened not to his words. The church have left the strait gate. That consists of the sixteen-eleven KGB, old-time preaching, old-time heartfelt salvation, and spirit-filled singing. For the broadway of liberal Bibles, teachers, and for liberal preachers deceiving scores with the false, repeat-after-me salvation, pizza parties, puppets, and contemporary music. God thought so much of not only his people to warn them of these things, but he also warned the nations and the earth also. We better repent not only as God's people, but as a nation and the whole earth also."
Amen.
And then from Mary in Spokane. "Do you have any practical suggestions for answering the new questions doctors will be asking us?"
About guns, I assume?
I would imagine.
About my guns, perhaps. I'll be quite honest with you, and this is my answer. It's none of your business. It's that easy. It's none of your business. You have no right to know what I have in my home. If you want to find out, come and take it. I'll show you what's there then.
You gotta turn to what you got in your home. How many guns you have, doctor?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, well, hold on just a second, and we'll see if we can get you on here. You'll be talking to everybody.
Who are we talking to?
Go ahead.
Give her a speaker on, honey.
Oh. All right, try it again.
Hello, Pastor Butch.
Hello, sir.
This is Kevin. I'm calling from Doers of the Word. I know you got an email from Cupid Ken. Pastor Ernie is sick. He's had a problem with his balance with the flu. He's had it for two or three weeks now, and he'll get a little better. He just can't keep a check it. So we appreciate your prayers for Pastor Ernie.
Of course. Of course.
Of course.
We're fighting the fight out here. We're trying to be a plan Parenthood and with our certain ministry, a part of the death row team. We're the best minister to death row to the inmate care in Ohio. And we just wanted to let you know that we're watching and we'll keep you in prayer. Pastor Ernie is waiting for you to come up here and preach from our pulpit, his pulpit, and he wants to come down and preach for years again. So I just wanted to pass that along. He was walking for a little while, but we had some computer issues, and he wasn't feeling well, so he went back home to go to bed.
Okay, well, thank you, Ken.
Please pray for him. Pray for us.
And we'll do that. We'll do that. Yeah, you tell Brother Ernie we'll have him back down sometime as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you. Folks, the lines are open at 304-335-2826. How many's ever heard of Alex Emnesolgenist?
Yes.
He said this, "Survival is not the be-all and end-all of a life worthy of man. Sometimes the worst thing that we can know about a man is that he survived. Those who say that life is worth living at any cost have already written for themselves an epitaph of infamy where there is no cause and no person that they shall not betray to stay alive." Okay, we've got comments open. Anybody, any more emails, Phil?
Not right now. We can pass the microphone.
Phil, good kicking off, Phil. Say what you want to say.
No feedback.
Did you hear that, Butch? Okay, I don't know. You know why? That's why. Okay. How about this? Is that better? Okay. I have two different microphones. Now, there's only one if you can understand what's going on, and that's if you look at it from the Creator's view. And we're not to worship the creature but the Creator. And so many people are totally lost. And like you said, count the costs before you start. And if you don't, if you're not spiritually grounded, don't even begin to fight because you can't.
I did a sermon once, and I wrote a chapter in a book entitled, "Obedience is Worship. Worship is obedience. Whom you obey is who you worship." Okay, you want to pass around? Marsha, you want to say anything?
To the women out there, again, I say, as I did on the air the other night, in the name of Jesus through the power of He, the Holy Ghost. Keep your hearts in tune. We used to sing a song in church when I was a believer. And that's through prayer and meditation. Meditation is not burning incense and trying to get in touch with Satanistic beings, demonic beings. It is listening to God. We talk to Him a lot times. Sometimes we don't stop listening. God is a gentleman. He doesn't enter into our hearts and our minds unless we invite Him. And He doesn't speak in the thunder or the fire. He speaks to us in a still, small voice. And when you hear that and you, in obedience, serve Him and do what He asks, then there you are going to be at the place that you can stand strong by your godly husband. If you don't have a godly husband, be in prayer. If he's not mistreating you, asking you to do things against the word of God, love him. Don't lose your power of prayer, your communication with God. Because I have witnessed many times, you will be alight to His salvation. Pray for your children daily, for your grandchildren daily, and be there as the anchor to their haven of rest if they have to leave at some point to where we might not see them again. Still have a promise. I know which is forwarding address. And I know that it will only be a temporary time until I spend eternity with my husband here and my brother in Christ, my pastor. And just be encouraged, but be of sound mind. A lot of times we're so easy to get off because we're made emotional, and that's okay. Lift your sisters up in Christ. Bind together. We might get, as my grandson says sometime, "We're going to get scared." Man, I'm scared. But don't hesitate to say, "Jesus, I'm scared, but fear will not overcome me. By the grace and power of the Lord, the comfort of the love, the home that Jesus led will give me the wisdom and knowledge of how to protect it and keep it as long as God expects us to, even if He's not there. Just be of good courage. God is not mocked."
Folks, the phone lines open, 335-304-335-2826. Skype's on, Skype, CTDM Live, or the emails are still working.
Folks, there's so much to say. Scripture says, "Pray without ceasing." I ask that you will pray for Pastor Butch and his ministry, first of all, for getting the truth out as he does, putting his neck on the line. Protect that Yahweh will guide and protect him in all his words, along with his wife, his children. Phil Houdak, same. All those. Thank you for all the folks in here. It's a blessing to be here from Michigan. Pray for my wife. Won't do some hard times, people. I don't know what it's going to be. But if you're soft and you're feminine, it's time to get off the toilet. Be a man. Stand up. Quit whining. Trust in the Lord and get into His word. I'll let it go to somebody else. There's much more I could say, but pass it on. Thank you for supporting Butch.
These days are going to be hard on us, but you know, Christ has given us one hope. That hope's within us to seek Him first above all things. That's the only hope that we can actually live with. And if we die for standing for the love of Christ, then we get to go home early. And in these days, we have many gods to choose from, but there's only one true God. So let's turn and keep our faith in Christ Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Seek the anointing of the blood and waffire. Because warfare is not always physical. It is spiritual.
Amen. I want to say something about comment there. Everything you see manifest in the flesh is a spirit. I don't care what it is. A man speaks, thinks, and acts, and does deeds out of his spirit, out of his heart. That's what Christ said. So everything you see in the flesh, whether it's good or evil, is of a spirit. Our goal must be, our desire must be to make sure that spirit in us is the Holy Spirit, witnessing to our spirit. So whatever we say or do glorifies Him first, uplifts our brothers and sisters, and stands against evil. That's our greatest concern.
I want to share and want to captivate everyone's attention around the earth, the angels of heaven, the Most High God, the God of Abraham, the Father.
Look closer out there.
And the demons that roam this earth, and the devil himself. I'm going to share this. We know that the devil has been instrumentally involved. I've recently watched a movie. It's called Innocence Betrayed, about an hour long. This begins with, in Turkey, with the butchering of mostly Christian people between the years 1915 to 1917. It disarmed the people through legislation. And it was Muslims, these Islamic people. And it went from there, it went to, if I remember correctly, it went to the Ukraine. And from there, it went to Germany, and to Southeast Asia, and to Africa. And what they did when they disarmed these people, there was genocide that followed, the butchering of millions of people. When I was in jail in Battle Creek, Michigan, back in 2011, I'm not ashamed to say that. Doesn't bother me a bit to say that I've been in jail. I don't ever want to go again. I don't want none of these people to go to jail, nor any of you folks out there. I befriended a young man by the name of Siddiqui. And Siddiqui, if you can hear me today, you told me that you just wanted to go back home to Sierra Leone, where you're from. Missionaries brought you here, you and your mother and some of your family. You told me that your daddy was butchered, and so was your baby sister, was butchered by the hands of these demonically possessed or oppressed people. And that's what we got coming here to America. We're going to have genocide here in America. They're going to butcher us off. If we don't stand today, we're never going to stand. We have to go before the Most High. We have to humble ourselves in prayer and in sackcloth and in ashes and call upon Him and seek His face and ask Him to forgive us. Now, He will heal this land one day when He comes back.
Amen.
He will heal the land. And all of you that serve the devil and are obedient to this evil that's going on, you will perish. You will be destroyed. The sword will, you will be butchered yourselves by the God of Abraham himself and with his saints. And I intend, and these people here and the people around the earth intend, that intend to be with Him, will be part of this. Do we want to be? I don't intend to hurt anybody, but it's your choice. It will come to your doorstep. You will be destroyed for your disobedience against the God of Abraham. It's your choice. That gift, that free gift of salvation is open for everybody that seeks Him. So please, don't serve these demonic forces in the flesh that we have going about the earth today. Don't serve them. Defy them. Resist. Thank you.
Now, folks, the phone lines are open. They're very quiet. 304-335-2826. Skype's open, and so is the email. If you don't talk to us, it's your fault. Who's that?
I'm glad to talk to you people out there, and I'm a pastor with his younger brother. And we should be here in person with us if this is a good fellowship of a good little family, Lord. And we thank Him for it. And you people out there, as I wondered if you could pick up arms and fight. Let me tell you something. What are you going to lose here if you do? You've got a shambles on the hill. You've got a man waiting on you in heaven when you get there. Stand up, be a man, guard up your loaves, protect your family, your children. We are going to win this battle, and we're not going to win this battle, there's no doubt. We're going to lose. But Christ is going to win the battle for us. So regardless of how we go through it, we're going to end up in heaven. And if you don't know Christ now, this and only heaven, you are going to know.
That's right.
So you better think it over. You don't want to live through this until you die and go to hell. Receive Christ, then you know where you're going.
Anybody else here want to say something? Come on in here if you like. Anybody want to say anything? Come on in. Whatever you don't want to say, honey. All right, any more comments coming in?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, this is Jim from North Carolina. "Brother Butch, are you going to have the lieutenant from here in North Carolina back on your radio show? And do you have intel why all these politicians are building underground bunkers? And last, but not least, what is that list you read from that had all the quotes from all those famous politicians saying why they wanted the New World Order like was on your video?"
Okay, let's start with the last question first. This is the book we offer to the ministry. It's called Quotations to Read and Ponder. They're over a hard put together for us. It has quotes from the founding fathers and we'll call the new age people that want to bring us into the world order. I don't matter what we ask for. If you want one, send ten bucks. We'll give you one. I know it's more than that, but ten bucks be fine, okay? You want a copy? We give it to you free. We can't afford to give them away. But we do have them for $10 at the ministry, okay? You can call the number and get the number for the address of the ministry at 800-777-4403. And the other questions, again, Phil, the first two were...
Are you going to have the lieutenant back?
Okay. Start with that lieutenant. Well, Phil Houdak and I will meet with, we meet with the lieutenant this coming Friday for a sit-down video conversation. Of course, video with not his face shown, but we are going to take, of course, video it. And we'll show his ID with his name not on it, obviously, to prove that he is who he says he is. And we will meet with him then. We'll make those videos and CDs available to you if you want them. But on the radio again, I don't know, it's kind enough of him. He has had some good friends who cautioned him to be careful, obviously so. Not only his career on the line, his life's on the line. Did that answer the book questions, Phil?
One more question that was, "Do you have intel on why these politicians are building underground bunkers?"
Underground bunkers have been around for years, and I'm sure they've updated them a lot. And about two hours from here is a place called White Sulfur Springs. They have a, the Green Bar Hotel has an underground bunker that for years they denied existed. Now they would like to take a tour. Let's take a tour, a part of it. It's a huge complex, fully contained, self-contained. They can live there for years. So this has nothing to do about underground bunkers for the politicians and their elite to be. This is built, of course, over TV. And there's even an underground railroad from DC to White Sulfur Springs to bring them in. So, yeah, the worms will find their own way to take care of themselves and let the peons die in and out in the open.
My state worms are going underground.
Yeah, exactly. So I just, they're there. They really are there. And I don't want us to say about that, but that we can't worry about. We must stand out. We give account for ourselves. They'll give account for themselves one day also. Payday is coming for all men. If yes, Bill. Okay. Is everybody through talking then? We can quit anytime. You can give me another one minute to email us or Skype us or call us. If you don't, we're going to shut her down. 304-335-2826.
I have just one thing that I keep trying to get away from. It's just a statement. Another thing to the women, because Arwen, I know that's not...
Grammatically correct.
Grammatically correct, as Phil said it, but...
But you are one.
It is Arwen. Just remember, ladies, if you have a godly man and you're working in a Christian home, a godly man doesn't mean he doesn't get mad. He don't hurt your feelings. Y'all don't have, if you go and tell everybody constantly, you never have a disagreement, your marriage probably will last because somebody's holding back a lot. And I've had several marriages. I think of one right now. But they never had an argument. They never disagreed.
Been divorced for years now.
Yep. And remember, yes, each of us, ours, have to be committed and submit to God our lives. But as God tells us, us as women are to submit to our own husbands. Submission, in that way, submission as our husband is held responsible for all the actions of the family that's under His roof. On either way, remember this. Submission to your husband is his submission to God. Submission to your husband is a sign of strength, not weakness.
Amen.
Anyone can fight, can argue, fight against submission. But that, if you need to have a Webster's dictionary, not the new ones. The one that they read out of earlier, you can call decision, and we can do that for you. But anyone can fight battles of trying to not do what God told us to do. Anyone that has experienced submission, once we do, oh, it's a glorious time because that's what we're supposed to do. We are a helpmeet. And if we're forced into leadership, we will handle it. But the calls of the submission to our husbands will also understand submission to God as a leader at the head of the home when it's need be. But to submit takes the strongest strength that you will probably ever experience in your life because it's to surrender control. Nobody likes to do that. But when you do, you don't get back and just cruise, but boy, it's a blessing. So with that submission, and study it in the word of God. Submission is a lot stronger than the liberated women movements. Submission, "I am liberated by the blood of the rain."
Hallelujah.
I have another email, Marsha. Okay, this is from Jed in Michigan.
Oh, right, brother Jed.
"Be strong and of good courage, for unto this people thou shalt, thou, uh, people shalt thou divide for an inheritance, the land which I swear unto their fathers to give them. Only be thou strong and very courageous, that thou mayest observe to do according to all the law, which Moses, my servant, commanded thee. Turn not from, turn not from it to the right or to the left, that thou mayest prosper, whithersoever thou goest. This book of the law shall not depart out of thy mouth, but thou shalt meditate therein day and night, that thou mayest observe to do according to all that is written therein. Or then thou shalt make thy way prosperous, and then thou shalt have good success."
Amen.
"Had not I commanded, had not I commanded thee, be strong and of good courage. Be not afraid, neither be thou dismayed, for the Lord thy God is with thee, whithersoever thou goest. I stand with you in solidarity before the living God, and I praise Him for men like you."
Praise the Lord. Hallelujah.
Thank you, brother.
Okay, if that's all, and I assume it is, we'll enclose for this session. Get back here again in two weeks. I think it's the first of February, I believe, right at that. Another Bible study and get-together. What happened between now and two weeks from now, only our Father knows. But I would ask you to determine in your heart what you need to do. And when the time comes, do it. If your brother cries for help, as Nehemiah said, Nehemiah 4, if you need help, you blow the trumpet. We'll tell him, "Run it." If your brother cries for help, your next-door neighbor or in the next county or next state or the 10 states away, if they cry for help, true men of God. True men of God need to rally. Oh, I can't afford to miss work, I can't afford this. Tell me something, how can you afford not to?
True. Right on, brother.
If a, if a, if a good sheriff decides to defend this county, either a different state, go to that county and help that sheriff.
Amen.
Let him deputize you. It is time, men, and women, but I'm talking now, I hope to men. It is time, it is past time, for you to gird up your loins and put on your sword and hold on the helmet, take up the, take up the shield from the breastplate, and get ready for battle.
That's exactly right.
And if you're not gonna do that, I ask you this, turn this program off and don't listen to me anymore.
Amen.
I, I don't need dead weight, I need people who will stand.
Amen.
And I mean nothing by my heart, we'll see you next time, bye-bye.
Okay, anybody else under public comment?
Mr. Bonner? Thanks for the opportunity, my name's Mark Bonner, and I'm from the Harmon area. And I'd like to second Mr. House's comments, and also talk about a separate issue. As you know, in the national media, and in the Senate House and at the White House, gun control legislation is being discussed in response to what happened in Connecticut. And, uh, there's a group of senators and other people in DC that's been pushing a gun control agenda for years. Senator Dianne Feinstein has been quoted as saying, "Mr. and Mrs. America, turn your guns in," if she had her way. And there's been numerous studies done where gun control has taken place, in England and Australia. And the studies show that violent crime goes up when that happens. And, uh, the honest people turn their guns in, and then the, the illegal people, it's, it's doing drugs or whatever, the black market thrives, and those people have all the guns they want. And they know they can go in and, and rob so-and-so, because they're not armed, they can't protect themselves. So as a, as a county commission, I wondered if you all would consider offering a letter to our two senators and congressperson? In effect, that, uh, that the Randolph County Commission would urge them not to support any bill that has gun control legislation involved.
We will take it up consideration.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Mr. Houdock, if you would?
Yes, thank you. If you don't mind, I'll just...
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, I'd like to take credit for that picture, but I didn't do it. But that's a nice one. If my daughter would, she's gonna pass out to the commissioners and to the sheriff, uh, signed copies of Sheriff Richard Mack's book. County Sheriff, America's Last Hope. And also there's a pamphlet called Victory for State Sovereignty. To be honest with you, this is the most nervous I've ever been, because this is the most important address I've ever given. And Sheriff, I want to congratulate you for, for being the sheriff, I'm glad you are. I, I agree with Mark Bonner, I also agree with Mr. House, Pastor House. We're, we're in a terrible mess here, folks, and you folks are, uh, I appreciate you taking the responsibility of being our representatives in, in county government. Because we, we see a big problem. And in this book, uh, the introduction, here's what it says. "America is at the threshold of what appears to be the utter despotism, to be utter despotism. People from every state and countryside are begging to be left alone and treated as freemen. Thomas Jefferson opined, 'When all governments shall be drawn to Washington as the center of all power, it will render powerless the checks provided, and will become as venal and oppressive as the government from which we separated.'" Well, President Jefferson was right, and now what do we do about it? Who will stop this venal and oppressive government, as Jefferson so firmly warned us? I'm gonna play a video now, it's seven minutes long, and it's gonna, it's gonna paint a picture. It's gonna, it's gonna put some pieces together that, it's self-explanatory. One is the quote that, that Mark mentioned.
... If the president is going to act, or executive orders, executive action that can be taken, we haven't decided what that is yet. But we're compiling it all with help of the Attorney General and, and all the rest of the cabinet members, as well as legislative action we believe is required. So, uh, I appreciate you very much being here. If the president is going to act, or executive orders, executive action that can be taken, we haven't decided what that is yet. But we're compiling it all with help of the Attorney General and, and all the rest of the cabinet members, as well as legislative action we believe is required.
And that's what I think we need to do with guns, really change the way in which people think about them, think about guns. Now, this is not gonna be something that's very easy to do. Anti-gun message, every day, every school, at every level. One thing that I think is clear with young people and with adults as well, is that we just have to be repetitive about this. It's not enough to simply have a catchy ad on a Monday and then only do it every Monday. We need to do this every day of the week and just really brainwash people into thinking about guns in a vastly different way.
California Senator Dianne Feinstein worked for more than a year to get the assault weapons bill passed, in the face of ferocious opposition from the National Rifle Association. She says she got the best she could.
If I could have gotten fifty-one votes in the Senate of the United States for an outright ban, picking up every one of them, "Mr. and Mrs. America, turn them all in," I would have done it. I could not do that, the votes weren't here.
This is a SIG 550. It's designed to destroy anything standing within its four-hundred-meter trajectory. And there are over five-hundred thousand of them kept in Swiss homes. Guns and shooting are a strong Swiss tradition. Basic military training is mandatory for young men, and afterwards, they're required to keep their weapon at home. Mark Heim is the Ticino representative for the lobby group Protel.
Um, basically, this was my father's military rifle. And, uh, of course, he got to keep it when he was finished. I have my grandfather's rifle in the office, hanging on the wall. This was mine when I did service, which is quite an old one, it was introduced in nineteen fifty-seven. Was used until nineteen ninety. And this is my son's, that's the current model, that's what's being used today. That's what we'll be using to shoot the Feltschesen today.
The Feltschesen, or Tirofederalian Campania, as it's known in these parts, is an annual Swiss event, and it's also the largest shooting festival in the world. Roughly two-hundred thousand people come out to target practice all across the country. Ammunition is provided by the government.
So if somebody wants to build a coal-powered plant, they can, it's just that it will bankrupt them, because they're gonna be charged a huge sum for all that greenhouse gas that's being emitted.
I've never seen anything like it. The irony couldn't be richer, the hypocrisy couldn't be more outrageous, the message couldn't be more meaningful. Hello and welcome to Justice, I'm Judge Jeanine Pirro. This week, the Journal News continues to hide, refusing to explain why they printed the names and addresses of legal gun owners, including yours truly. And by the way, although it's none of your business, there's a reason people have guns. We don't need your sanctimonious permission. And you dare put our families in danger, you pry into our lives, you put our privacy and security and our safety in jeopardy?
As far as these so-called assault weapons, you say that they don't have any defense use. You tell that to the guy that I saw on a videotape of the LA riots, standing up on his rooftop, protecting his property and his life from an entire mob with one of these so-called assault weapons. Tell me that he didn't have a legitimate self-defense use. Just one final statement. Um, I've been sitting here getting more and more fed up with all of this talk about these pieces of machinery having no legitimate sporting purpose. No legitimate hunting purpose. People, that is not the point of the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment is not about duck hunting. And I know I'm not gonna make very many friends saying this, but it's about our rights, all of our rights, to be able to protect ourselves from all of you guys up there.
I was angry at myself for having made what I realize now was an incredibly stupid decision, to obey a bad law and allow my family to get killed. And I was mad at my legislature, because I absolutely felt that they had legislated me out of the right to protect myself and my family.
This is Pitten School, and I know Sheriff Brady knows where it is. I wanna ask you something, Sheriff. If there's a problem there, and I'd be there today if I wasn't here, what would be the average response time for somebody to get there, average?
Just off the top of my, just roughly, I would say approximately thirty-five to forty minutes.
That's, and if the weather's bad?
Weather's bad, it could be...
Could be longer than that.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, I had my daughter here, we, we tease and call her Type Boy Mary, because she's not allowed in that building, because she's so dangerous. But, uh, she's, uh, being homebound instructed, and her response time is about five seconds, because she's got a .357 loaded and close to her. And that's what I call good gun control, two shots, two here, okay? She's quite able to, to defend herself. Now Sheriff, um, I wanna ask you, I'm on a petition for our county to do the proper response to what's happening in schools, and that is to arm the staff, the sheriffs, under the Sheriff Department's direction, to make sure that they're, they're qualified, that they're trained, and that, and that when she goes back to school, that she's gonna have, you know, if she goes back right now, she's gonna actually be more, in more danger than she is right now. And that's what I'm asking you to do, I'm asking you to, I, I know that's happening around the country. I wouldn't put a sign up in my yard to say, "This is a gun-free, uh, home, homebound instructed home," would I? But we've done that to our schools, we've said that they're, they're, they're gun-free zones, and that sets them up as a target. Okay, and so, you know, it's very important. Now, I got this book, was given to me in two, two thousand and three, I taught this man's daughter. His name is Charles Umpenauer, and he wrote a book, Freedom: A Fading Illusion. He brought this to my house, signed it and gave it to me. He knew I was, uh, very interested in freedoms, okay? And he worked for the Defense Department. And here's the introduction, I wanna read this. The title, Freedom: A Fading Illusion, indicates, as I perceive it, American society today, that America has gradually become less free, as it evolves into a serfdom or slave society. By the product, by, uh, the byproduct of globalization, our federal government continues to become more autocratic, as it assumes power is not granted to it, uh, by the Constitution. That's what is happening, that's why I'm here, because this is local government. This is where it really hits the road. But if, if the federal government is trying to take away our rights, uh, something has to be done. So I'm appealing to you folks, and I came in here and gave a, a ten-minute or so presentation, because Department of Homeland Security had ordered four-hundred-and-fifty million rounds of forty-caliber hollow points. I worked it out, I showed you how it would take twenty-point-four-seven miles of pickup trucks, F-150s, bumper to bumper, from here to Hudsonville Prison, loaded with ammunition that's designed to kill, and can only be used domestically, it can't be used in war, you can't use forty-caliber hollow points. Okay, it's, uh, I forget, seventeen million pounds. Well, guess what, folks, we're now up to one-point-six billion rounds, more than double that. There's something wrong here, folks, you can now take the pickup trucks, run them all the way from Hudsonville Prison, all the way to Harmon, bumper to bumper. And that's in the last, what it says, nine months. Jews for Preservation of Firearms Ownership, just wrote a book, it's called Death by Gun Control. Again, I'm bringing up what Mark brought up. In the twentieth century, a hundred and seventy million people were murdered by their own governments, more killed than by crime and more killed than by war. This is Jews on and out, and you can see why they'd be interested. So this doesn't have to be. But it's gonna take an action on, on a people's part, on government's part, on people that love our, uh, the Constitution. Now, the Constitution, it doesn't give us those rights, it just reiterates the unalienable rights that we have, okay? And, and in the Bible, in Luke, when Christ was gonna leave, when Jesus was gonna leave the earth, he told his disciples to sell their cloaks and buy a sword. So, uh... I leave with the message that there is hope. I have a lot more to show you, of course, I'm not gonna show it to you now. I'm gonna give this to, uh, this is an audio of a person who's been in law enforcement in North Carolina for twenty-seven years. And he says in here that there is a plan to forcefully take the gun, the guns of the people of the United States. And I'm gonna meet with this man, uh, it's, it's become viral on YouTube. Because I don't like what I see, a lot of people do not like what they see. West Virginia's been declared, you know, you declare war on guns, and war on coal, you declared war on West Virginia. So, uh, I, I want you to, to look at that, this is the PowerPoint that I just, I just showed you. I wanna give this to you. I just wanna be a resource, I, I've been studying this kind of thing for a long time, and I will not surrender my guns. Sheriff Brady, you, I saw your picture in the paper, and you took a note to uphold the Constitution, I did too as a teacher. Your, your job's a little more, uh, evolved than mine, but I will not turn in my guns. I will not turn in my guns. And I know that you... And I know that you...